Regular meeting number 24 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us pray. Most compassionate and merciful God, the members of Columbus City Council meet this evening to consider legislation pertinent to the issues and concerns of the citizens of our community. Many of our citizens look to them to listen to and respond to their needs. In many ways, they have a difficult, if not impossible, task. One in which not everyone is happy with the results of their deliberations and decisions. Nevertheless, Lord, bestow on one the gift of your wisdom to understand and deserve the best course for the city we call home.
As summer approaches, we pray that there will be peace and harmony among the citizens of our city. We also pray for the many graduates progressing to higher education on the elementary, high, or college or graduate levels, as well as those who've completed their education and are now in search for gainful employment. May they be successful in their job search and find employment that gives expression to the education they've received and to the dignity that good and productive work can give to those who do their best to contribute to the common good of all. We also pray this evening for all the animals of the world. Humans and animals share this planet. We share this land of ours. And we accept our responsibility as stewards of creation. May all of us, whatever our species, be able to contribute to the welfare of one another. And may your blessings be ever upon our great city and its leaders, especially the members of Columbus City Council. Amen.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the rule.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda, will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
I would like to go first to Councilmember Page, who has some very special guests she'd like to welcome into council chambers this evening. Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Ginther. This evening, we have Mrs. Norma Dodge, who is here with us, to represent with the Columbus Zoo. They have brought some things in support of Mel Dodge Days and a few furry animals for us to partake in as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President Ginther, councilmembers, we're very, very proud to, for the first time ever, show you a very highly endangered Siberian tiger, or a mer tiger, that unfortunately was orphaned. We have three young tiger cubs at the zoo. And if you wouldn't mind, I sure would love to have Tommy Dodge up there walking around, being able to have you get an opportunity to see how close and personal. We also have Calvin with me today with a clouded leopard, and a clouded leopard that you could find in Southeast Asia like Borneo. And highly, highly endangered cat. And one of the most endangered animals that we have at the zoo. And we love the fact that we have such a grand zoo with the opportunity to inspire so many people. Today, I have Joe Hickman with me, as well as Sherri Kish, who are on our board. And I'm very honored today to have Norma Dodge with me today. And the reason why I am here with the council is to talk about Mel Dodge Days. As we all know, Mel was such an advocate for this community and to inspire people about wildlife and wild places. And with Norma, that passion has been with the zoo for many years. And many years ago, we developed the Mel Dodge Days, which allows Recreation and Parks to partner with kids all over the city of Columbus, over 40 different rec centers. And we're providing over 2,200 kids an opportunity to go to the zoo, have a great day. They get a gift bag and food and activities. And it's all about inspiring people. Norma has been with us and is so passionate to keep that legacy alive of education and conservation messages. And when you see these beautiful animals, I just wanted to thank you all. Thank you, Norma, thank you for everything that you do for this community. And we appreciate the partnership that we have with the city of Columbus. Together, we are unstoppable for promoting conservation and education and family fun. With that being said, I just wanted to again thank Recreation and Park for all of the opportunities to inspire the youth. There's no better day than Mel Dodge Days. And I want to thank you all for giving us that opportunity to partner.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you for the work that you're doing with our young people to give them the opportunity to come out to the zoo. Do any members of council have any comments? Well, thank you again, and thanks for bringing the animals down as well.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Dodge. Thank you.
Thanks for your indulgence. I'd like to ask, we have some additional special guests this evening. We have students that are part of the program with Northwest Civic Association. And I'd like to ask each of the students with us here tonight to introduce themselves, a little bit about their work this year with the Civic Association, and maybe where you are headed off to school or what the next steps are for you, either training workforce or education wise. So we'll start over here. And you do need to press the button, make sure that lights up for you.
My name is Emily Carpenter. We're all seniors and we go to Centennial High School. And the next step for me is Columbus State and maybe a linguistics major.
My name is Ben Wilson. I'm going to Columbus State Community College for two years and transferring to Ohio State. I'd like to have a major in psychology and philosophy.
Hello, I'm Mary von Staden. I would say the next step for me is I'm going to be working on some of my arts and building up a portfolio so I can submit it to college in the future.
My name is Jacob Dubur. And I also do go to Centennial High School. And I'm actually an exchange student from Germany. So I'm in my last month now, and I go back in June.
Well, guten Tag, my friend. With the last name Ginther, you gotta know a little bit about Germany. And I want to recognize Rose Marie Lisko, who has been such a fantastic partner with Northwest Civic Association and Columbus City Council and these outstanding young people. Thank you, Rose Marie, and thank you for the Civic Association's ongoing commitment to growing and developing exceptional talent from right in our own neighborhood. So welcome here this evening. Any announcements or resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I do have two resolutions. The first is 67X 2015 to declare the week of May 17 to 23, 2015, to be Emergency Medical Services Week in Columbus. I'd like to invite Acting Chief O'Connor, Dr. Kessig, and Robin Goodes, an Ohio Avenue Elementary School cardiac arrest survivor, survivor due to EMS efforts. As well as if all, it's okay with me if you guys want to, you can stand out, come up, whatever you want. But we have our brave women and men of fire in the back. I'd say about 50 or so men or women. Y'all are more than welcome to come forward if you want. All right, it looks like they're standing in the back. I move for passage.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
So Dr. Kessig, 126,000 runs last year.
That's right. And we transported about half of those to hospitals. And I'm proud to say that we have one of the highest survival rates from cardiac arrest in the country. We do a great job with heart attacks, strokes, trauma. And it's all because of those very humble men and women that are sitting in the back, not willing to come forward because they just accept it as part of their job. So we have an exciting week planned for EMS Week. Tomorrow, we're going to be training 100 high school children in CPR and giving them anytime CPR kits. And we're doing the same thing on Wednesday with new Americans. So Bhutanese, Nepalese, and Somali folks. And then on Thursday, we're very proud to have, I think it's about our 10th annual celebration, we invite the survivors from cardiac arrests here in Columbus. And we reunite them with their rescuers on the Columbus Division of Fire. And it's a very profound, dramatic, and impactful time where they're able to express their appreciation to their rescuers. And we celebrate that by having a luncheon at the local 67 IFF Union Hall, which they graciously allowed us to use as a venue. And so we're very appreciative to President Reel for that. And so we're very happy that the city has promoted and supported EMS within the Division of Fire. If I could introduce the acting fire chief, Kevin O'Connor, for a few comments.
We want to thank you for the recognition. Over 400 times a day, the citizens of Columbus have one of the worst moments of their life, and they entrust us to respond to help them. Council has given us the ability and the resources to do that. We appreciate that, and we're glad we can help. Dr. Kessig kind of mentioned it earlier. It's the people in the back of the room who are doing this work who don't even want the recognition. Obviously, Councilman Klein invites them up, and they didn't want to come up. They're the people we need to give our applause to, our recognition to. And behalf of the Division of Fire, we want to say thank you to the council and thank you for the citizens of Columbus for recognizing us during this time.
Thank you, Acting Chief O'Connor. Dr. Kessig, do you want to introduce the other folks that are up here?
I certainly would. Thank you, Councilman Klein. We have our captain for our continuous quality improvement, Captain Aaron Renner. Beside him is our associate medical director, Dr. Eric Cortez, who completed an EMS fellowship about a year ago. And then he came on to assist us with medical direction for the Division and Fire. And then our Lieutenant Sawyer with Community Relations, who's at the epicenter of everything that we do in the community and certainly during EMS Week. And I'm afraid that our patient, Robin Goodes, I don't see her in the audience. I'm not sure that she actually made it. So I apologize for that. But those are the rest of our party tonight.
Great. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, let's give these brave men and women a rounding. Council President, my next resolution was tabled last week. I first move to remove 123X 2015 from the table.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
To recognize May as Water Safety Month in Columbus. And I'd like to invite the folks from the Red Cross, Kurt Anders, Craig Nagy. If they're available, please come forward. I have a almost three-year-old at home. So we've been focusing a lot with summer coming up, exactly how important water safety is. So I think this is timely and something near and dear to my heart. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. President Ginther, council? Thank you very much for the invitation to be here. We are very proud that this is our 100th year of actually providing water safety training to members of the community. And we've recently found that there's been about 61% of parents believe that their children between the ages of four and 17 aren't able to go and do some basics water safety skills, such as jumping into water, it's over their head, being able to turn around, identify an exit within a pool right there, or even just simply tread water for about a minute once they're inside the water. So this is definitely something that we are very proud to be able to work with organizations such as Columbus Parks and Rec to go ahead and provide this type of training. And it is definitely, as you mentioned right there, Councilman Klein, it's something that's very important to families such as yours and everybody else hopefully on up here on council. So we are also able to go ahead and teach the lifeguards who teach the individuals or watch over the individuals that train these individuals for water safety training. And it's something that we're very proud and happy to be able to offer up. If you're unable to get to a Parks and Recreation Center or anywhere else where they're training, I just want to let you know there's also an app that's through the American Red Cross that can assist families to try to teach their loved ones how to do that right there. And you can just go to redcross.org, and they will go ahead and give you the pathway to get to that particular app. That app is free, and there's many other different preparedness apps, such as the tornado app like last week that we were dealing with right there. But thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. This is something we're very proud to offer. 100 years of doing this, and it's one of the many things that we also wish by this time next year when we celebrate our own anniversary, one of the many different types of trainings. We have an ambitious goal of training upwards of about 500,000 people in how to be better prepared for the emergencies that they may encounter within our community, within our Ohio Buckeye region. So thank you very much for the opportunity to have us come up here and talk about this today.
Well, thank you. And I'm certainly reminded of the tragic event where a young man, Elijah Walker, fell through the ice and died. And there was a local hero that came and tried to save Elijah. And unfortunately and sadly, Mr. Jenkins also died. I believe some of the first responders, is Sergeant Hughes, or Officer Ramsier, or firefighter Vingal? Are they here? Please, yeah, please stand up and come forward. Please.
I brought up Mr. Jenkins, his mother and brother. To honor them as well.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Do you maybe want to say a few words about how important this is?
Absolutely. Water safety is very important. That day was very tragic. I saw what a true hero looks like. I do my best every day. That day, I tried to save a young, two young men's lives, and it didn't happen the way I would like it to have happened. However, I was able to speak with my chain of command, and we put some things in place to allow for rescue safety ropes to now be in the back of each cruiser in Columbus.
So as a result of this event, the cruisers have rescue safety ropes. So should this unfortunate incident occur again, you would have the tools necessary?
Yes, sir. And we've actually saved several lives using these, at least five or six that I can think of offhand, sir.
And I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And I believe there's a representative from the family, Jaclyn Downing. If she's here, please stand to be recognized. So this was a team effort that, you know, the men and women of our fire department, the men and women of our police department engage in every day. And this is, this calls to mind just how important these issues are to our community. So thank you to the Red Cross for being on the forefront of education to save as many lives as possible. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I believe I need to move for passage still. So I'll move for passage.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Protem Mills? Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have two items this evening. We would first like to recognize some students from Centennial High School who are also visiting with us. I would like to invite to the podium members of the Centennial High School STEM Club, who recently won a national competition that highlighted their ingenuity and creativity in a three-dimensional problem-solving exercise. Would students Maria Kerakay, Vicente Fernandez-Gallardo, and Matthew Williamson, along with teacher Jennifer Zutterling, come up to the podium? Thank you all for joining us this evening. The team included two other students who cannot be with us tonight, and they beat 17 other teams to earn the top prize. What makes this team's accomplishment even more remarkable is the fact that they received limited funding from the district. And Ms. Zutterling volunteered her time and many of the materials needed to construct the device. Before I pass out the certificates to celebrate your accomplishments, I would like to offer you all a chance to address council and the community.
We just want to say thank you for inviting us here tonight. It's an honor. And I can say that on behalf as the advisor of STEM Club for the last eight years at Centennial, that this team this year has been one of the most humble and intuitive groups that I've ever worked with. And so knowing that they're all freshmen and sophomores, that's good for our future.
Councilwoman Paley?
I read the article in the Columbus Dispatch. And as a member of, as a graduate of Columbus Public Schools, I have to say that I was extremely proud, not only of the team, but of the teacher. And I'm a perfect example that you, Columbus Public Schools does provide a good education. But I had a lot of great teachers going through them too. And I want to thank you for believing in your students because you are showing them the path to be our future. We are so proud of you for what you did and to make national attention come to Columbus. Congratulations for being great and being part of our city and being part of us.
Thank you. Any other members of council? President Ginther?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. And I, along with Councilmember Paley, read this story and went to work right away in trying to get you all down here to be recognized. We oftentimes like to celebrate our great athletic teams or outstanding academic performances. So I felt it was just as important to recognize outstanding talent right here in our own neighborhoods. The Centennial kids are, I guess, getting all the love tonight. But there are other great schools throughout our school district. But you have shown a tremendous amount of skill determination and gifts that I'm hoping you're going to leverage on behalf of this community and the greater community in years to come. So we're very proud of you. You've made Columbus very proud and put us on the map as a place that the best and brightest can put their talents to work on behalf of the community. So congratulations, we're proud of you. And we know we have great things in the years to come from these outstanding students.
Thank you. And before you all take a seat, we have a presentation that we're going to show council members as well as those attending of your presentation. And if someone could kind of walk us through so we know what we're looking at, that would be great.
Our machine was an apple pie building apparatus. It basically took place, the first competition took place on pie day. And so we took, the machine actually was kind of intuitively figured out by the kids about figuring out that they wanted to have something that kind of played on that theme of apple pie. And so the kids basically took all of the ingredients or the tools that you would need in the kitchen in order to make an apple pie. And so that's what you're seeing now is the process. We're about to open the oven door, and there's the pie. And that triggers the eraser to erase the chalkboard, which actually was the task we needed to complete, was to erase the chalkboard.
And we also have certificates here for all the members of your team. And congratulations. And if you could just have each of your students introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Matthew Williamson. I'm in the ninth grade, and I like STEM club.
Hello, I'm Vicente Fernandez-Gallardo. I'm in ninth grade, and I also play tennis.
I am Maria Kerakay, ninth grade, and I play tennis and the piano.
And President Ginther, I have another resolution that I'd like to introduce from the floor this evening. And it's 0132X-2015 to extend special recognition to Mr. Alan McKnight on the memorable occasion of his retirement and to celebrate his remarkable service to the city of Columbus. I'm just going to read briefly some of Director McKnight's accomplishments while his time as the Director of Recreation and Parks. Mr. McKnight began his journey in public service with a summer internship with the city of Columbus in park planning, design, construction, and building parks. And whereas in 2007, Mr. McKnight was appointed Director of the Recreation and Parks Department, where he leads a staff of 519 and handles an annual operating budget of $45 million and a capital budget of $36 million. And whereas in his tenure as Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. McKnight oversaw the acquisition of land and the development of numerous parks, recreation centers, and trail systems that residents of Columbus enjoy. And he also oversaw the development of the Sado Maual and the Sado Greenways project along the downtown riverfront. And whereas, Mr. McKnight has been an exemplary and loyal public servant who has served the city of Columbus with integrity, efficiency, and professionalism for 39 years. And whereas, Mr. McKnight's fruitful career has earned him the respect and love of many. From his passion to help at-risk youth in the city of Columbus to his desire to provide programming for aging residents, Mr. McKnight shall enter into retirement knowing that he provided outstanding service to the city of Columbus and established a track record of success to be admired by others. Now, therefore, be resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby honor and recognize Mr. Alan McKnight for his dedicated and exemplary service to the city of Columbus. Thank you. I now move for passage.
Second.
Thank you.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Chair Page. Mr. McKnight, it was a true pleasure working with you when I joined council in the first three and a half years of my tenure on council, chairing Recreation and Parks. It's a wonderful committee to chair. And as you know, because you could deliver it every day, serving the citizens, and how important recreation centers are and parks are to our community. And you at the helm for the many years that you've been serving, I think have reached a demonstrated difference in the landscape, in the actions, in the actions and the actions in the actions reached a demonstrated difference in the landscape, in the actions, in the attitude, in the community that we love so much, which is the city of Columbus. So go to your boat, sail around the world, whatever you're going to do, but thank you for serving the city.
Councilwoman Mills?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Director McKnight, thank you. You know, that's, that's all I can say, just thank you, and I hope you know how much that, that means for me to say thank you for just everything, your belief and confidence and, and just your passion for the young people and their engagement from play to their experience. And, and that means a lot, so thank you very much.
Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Dr. McKnight, I certainly have had the honor, when I first came on council, that was the committee that I chaired. I chaired it for a lot of years, and certainly had the opportunity to work with you on many projects, and just appreciate the work from, one, the HVAC system and all the recreation centers that we, that we worked together on, but the dog parks and thinking about, you know, moving the dirt at Scioto Mau and to see it today, and the changes down at the riverfront, and the work that you've done with, that, you know, just thinking about remodeling the recreation centers and, and just thinking about the, the work that you've done that affect children as well as seniors. And just, just really appreciate how you've changed the quality of life for the, for the residents of our city, as well, and also the visitors that come to our city on the change of the downtown area. You certainly have been a consummate professional. You have been truly a delight to work with. I just really enjoyed that, that's a fun committee, and you just touched the lives of so many people. So you have, I just wish you the very best, you and Kathy. It's a well-deserved retirement that you're hopefully were going to have, but you are just a great guy, and you have certainly, you know, you took over the recreation parks at a time where there were some, had been some challenges, and you have just took that assignment on and, and just kept moving forward. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate you and your wife for all the kindness that you have shown me and, and this community. So I wish you Godspeed and just wish you the very, very best.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Director, thank you for your service. Many great highlights to your career, career that Councilmember Page and others have mentioned, but one nearest and dearest to my heart is the nearly doubling of the kids participating in meal programs during the summer and the dramatic expansion in the after-school program and the after-school meal program. There are more and more kids that have access to nutritious meals, great opportunities for physical activity, and meaningful programmatic opportunities because of your commitment and your leadership. That would not have happened without your personal commitment to those children and those families. And so, Director, I thank you for all of your great contributions, and on behalf of a grateful city, thank you to you and Kathy and your kids, because it's, people don't serve in public service, families serve in public service. And so, the McKnight family has given a lot to our great city, and want to thank you for that.
Councilwoman Paley?
I, I am going to say thank you. I think that when you go around the room, Director McKnight, and people have words that describe you, for me, your passion and compassion. I think those are words that describe your enthusiasm for what you do, and we will miss you.
Before you provide a few comments, I do want to present you with this resolution, as well as a gift from Columbus City Council. Unfortunately, you can't put it in the water, but it is kind of symbolic of your selling, and we're so very happy for you.
Just very briefly, thank you very much. You know, 1976, when I started, I never would have thought I'd been here thirty-nine years later, much less in the position I'm in, but it's been a great career. I tell the staff all the time, you know, you make a difference in people's lives every day. And, you know, when you're out there in the parks and in the rec centers, you see it. Many of you have seen it, and I've enjoyed working with you, all, all the members of council here, and all the council members that preceded you. It's been a great opportunity. And I also want to just say, you know, this, anything that recognition I'm receiving really is due to the staff of Recreation and Parks. They, they work very hard, day in and day out, and as you said, Council President Ginter, or Councilmember Mills, someone of you said it, this isn't an eight-to-five job. A lot of folks give up a lot of time with their families. I know I missed a lot of my kids' events because my wife took them and I was, I was working in the evening. So they work hard and make a big difference in people's lives, and I really enjoyed the opportunity, and I know I'm going to miss a lot of it, I'm going to miss a lot of you. But I'm not leaving town, so I may show up somewhere yet. And if I can help you out, let me know. Thank you very much.
I have nothing further, President Ginter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, President Ginter. I have a resolution tonight. I would like to ask Colonel Pete Wilkinson of the Military Officers Association of America to approach the podium. Tonight, we are offering a resolution to honor and recognize the month of May and June as Military Appreciation Month. The United States Army, the United States Navy, and the United States Marines were established in 1775, while the United States Coast Guard was established in 1790, and the United States Air Force was established, established in 1947. The Central Ohio Chapter of the Military Officers Association of America are pleased to join our community in recognizing those from our earliest citizen soldiers, our veteran-related organizations, and the continued service our veterans and veteran organizations provide in our community. So be it resolved that we honor, recognize, and celebrate the United States Armed Forces for their selfless duties sacrificed in continued vigilance, as well as making it possible for citizens of the United States to have the freedoms and the securities we have today. This resolution was also tabled last week, so first I move to remove this resolution from the table.
Second.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And then I move for passage.
Second.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Mr. Wilkins, Colonel Wilkins, can you make some comments for us today?
I just have a, an observation to share with you about how things have changed. I, I'm a Vietnam guy, okay? And when we came back from Vietnam, things were not good for the military. As a matter of fact, I was right down here at Lockmore Air Force Base, and our policy was no uniforms off the base. That's how tough things were. And then I hear this, and night and day, and it's just a remarkable thing, I kind of get a chill about it, about now, the appreciation for the military, and I just want to say I really appreciate what you're doing for us. Thank you.
Before I give you the resolution, Colonel, I do want to recognize Judge Barrows is here today, and I had the great opportunity of being present at the graduation of the Veterans Court today. Thank you, Judge Barrows, and your military staff that help our citizens every day with a program to provide benefits for our veterans. And for those of you who are unaware of it, you can get on the municipal court website, and there is a section for the Veterans Court. So thank you, Judge Barrows. It was a very nice graduation ceremony, and you can see that you're changing the lives not only of veterans, but of the, but of our community. So thank you, Ted. As a fan of Columbus Landmark Foundation, they want us to know that May is also National Preservation Month. If you are not a member and would like to join Columbus Landmarks, you can go to their website at www.columbuslandmarks.org, or call 221-0227 during regular business hours. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution this evening. It's Resolution 0137X. I'm going to ask Dr. Kevin Dixon, who's the Vice President of Adam H., I'm going to ask Rachel Martin, I think he has a group of people coming up with him, to come up to the podium. It is to recognize Adam H. of Franklin County for the contributions it's made to mental health awareness and behavioral healthcare needs. Whereas, Adam H. of Franklin County is dedicated to improving the well-being of our community by reducing the incidence of mental health problems and eliminating the abuse of alcohol and other drugs in Franklin County. And whereas, Adam H. has residents, helps residents of Franklin County find the right places to turn for affordable, quality alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health services, which are, which are provided by more than thirty-five nonprofit contract agencies located in neighborhoods and throughout the county. And whereas, Adam H.'s system exists for our community, connecting over forty-two thousand residents to appropriate mental health and alcohol and other drug treatment services, as well as funding prevention and early intervention services for more than twenty-three thousand adults and nineteen thousand children. And whereas, Adam H. is concerned with access to quality care and supports, and supports, and has invested in recovery residences and supportive housing units to provide expanded access to safe, affordable housing, as well as invested in expanding access to youth crisis beds to create a safe environment for youth in crisis. Whereas, Adam H. evaluates and determines the needs of behavioral healthcare services in our community every two years through a community plan that serves as a means for funding advocacy by defining local need, the gaps that may exist, and how additional funds may close those gaps, as well as for gathering local data to successfully obtain block grants from SAMSSUP and other behavioral health funding streams. Whereas, to accurately assess the trends of addiction, mental health, and pertinent behavioral health needs, Adam H. in partnership with the Health Policy Institute of Ohio and Community Research Partners conducted the Preparing for the Future, a 2014 Adam H. Needs Assessment, which produced policy-relevant and action-driven information. And whereas, May has been designated as the National Mental Health Month, a time dedicated to focusing national attention on the importance of mental health, and to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, as well as the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus. This council hereby recognizes the importance of mental health awareness and acknowledges the contributions that Adam H. of Franklin County has made to mental health and behavioral healthcare needs. I move for passage.
Klein Mills, Paige Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Good. Thank you very much, and you've shared just about everything I was going to share this evening, so I really appreciate the thorough overview of our mental health services that we provide. We thank City Council for your continued support, particularly with the prevention programs, and the approval of $288,000 for some of our prevention programs. And we have some representatives here just to say a couple of words, but I really want to particularly thank the partnership with the city. We trained over six hundred CIT officers in mental health services since 2003, and we're continuing to do that work for trainings each year, as well as the program called APS, Applications for Pride, Purpose, and Success. We also support that initiative through Columbus Public Health and Parks and Recreation, so it's always a good thing to, to hear the good work that they are doing as well. And we're doing a lot of integrative health networks. The Franklin Station, we have integrative healthcare services, both mental health as well as medical services offered at one site, along with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, and also Columbus Area Community Mental Health and several others here in Central Ohio. So with that being said, again, thank you for your continued support. We work very hard, this year we're expecting to serve over twenty-three thousand individuals in treatment services. We're looking to serve over seventy-five thousand, thousand young people and adults as well in our prevention, health promotion, and, and intervention services, prevention and integration services. So let me just go ahead and turn over Rochelle Martin before I continue on any further. Rochelle is the Executive Director of NAMI, which is National Alliance for the Mental Ill of Franklin County.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you very much, Councilwoman Tyson. I, I just want to talk briefly about the community conversations on mental health. In January 2013, President Barack Obama called for a national conversation to increase the understanding of mental health. The goals of the, of these conversations was to reduce the shame and secrecy associated with mental health, and to encourage people to seek help and to focus on youth who may or may not have access to services and treatment and trauma. We have been conducting conversations with youth all over the, all over Franklin County, particularly in our neighborhoods, and the information that the children gave us was astounding. And we, as, as, in light of that, we were also recognized as the lead city in our nation, and we are one of the, the lead cities that recognize our conversations on mental health. So thank you very much for the opportunity, once again, to speak to you about this.
And Jennifer Guthrie with one of our new innovative programs, she's going to share a little bit about that. She's our Program Director for Recovery Works.
Hi, I am Jennifer Guthrie. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the council. Recovery Works is a, a new innovative program. We are web-based, personalized web-based for adults who live in Franklin County and experience challenges with mental wellness or any addictive behavior. When I was diagnosed with a mental illness at eighteen, I thought my life was over. I did not understand the impact of what mental illness would have on my life, and would have really valued the opportunity to share with other peers my experiences. My, my recovery took many years to, to start and to work through. Several years ago, I had the opportunity to start getting involved in peer support and learned from people like me who are experiencing similar challenges what life could be like, and that it wasn't over, there was hope and there was opportunity. Tomorrow evening at the Columbus Public Health Auditorium, from six to eight p.m., we are going to have a community event celebrating Mental Health Awareness Month, and also the third week of May is SAMSSUP's National Prevention Week. The event is called Power of Hope. It is open to the community. Registration starts at 5:30. We will have a panel discussion from six to eight. We have members of the community, including family members. Dr. Dixon is going to be moderating. We have people who live with challenges with mental illness and addiction, as well as trauma recovery. We have a family member, we have Linda Jakes, who is a clinical director at Concord Counseling, and we'll all be sharing our experiences in the power of hope in recovery, that life isn't over and it can be lived to the full. So thank you very much.
And finally, Nettie Ferguson, who is, works with me at Adam H., and she's our Community Prevention Coordinator, and does a lot of work with the summer youth programs, where young people have an opportunity to go and enjoy activities in a safe and fun environment.
Yes, so we just, Adam, along with others, are trying to make the summer count, and count in many ways. First, we want to make it count in terms of a safe place for young people to participate. We have partners, not only with our providers, but also faith-based providers, so we have south, providers in the south end, we have some on the west side, and some on the, and the north side. The other piece we have are, are Adam providers that also throughout, are actually, some of them are in Columbus Metropolitan Housing residences, communities, in order to have a place for the young people to participate. So not only do we address alcohol and other drug issues around their own knowledge of what use is and how it might impact them if they choose to use, but we also have a parenting program that works with the parents to help them be better coaches and mentors for their children, and that is throughout the year. And then we also have some fun things for them to do, so they learn how to play, and play in healthy and safety, safe ways. Thank you very much.
And these are the individuals that really... And these are the individuals that really have the protean ability to reduce and mitigate the procrastinating methods of stigma. Stigma is such a powerful and profound entity within behavioral healthcare, and to reduce that gets people into treatment. People feel inclined to reach out and ask for help. So we're going to continue that work, and I just want to thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for your continued support and working with this, because we need individuals from different sectors to address this. It just doesn't hit one family, hits all families. One in four will experience a serious mental illness within given years. So we want to thank you, and for more information, www adamhfranklin.org.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. I have a resolution for you. Did I move for, yeah, I move for passage. Thank you. [applause] And I have, again, just want to thank them for coming down, and I have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow at 4:00, May 19th, at 4:00 p.m., we'll be convening the Committee Hearing on Finance, Health, and Human Services and Workforce Development. We'll also have our first quarter financial review during that hearing. Also, I would encourage you to, we want everyone to be able to participate in the local food plan, and we have a survey that takes about five minutes, and if you are interested in providing some input on our food plan, please go to www.surveymonkey.com/r/fapconsumer, and you will be able to provide information. If you do not have access to a computer, you can please contact, I'm sorry, just you can contact my office, and we can get you a hard copy so that you can provide your information to us. And lastly, if you're looking for a employment, or know someone who is looking, was job hunting, the Jewish Family Services will host on the 11th. Their 11th Annual Jewish Family Services Job Fair this Thursday, May 21st, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Hilton Eastern Town Center. You can call 614-559-0117. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney, Judge Barris?
No.
Any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? May we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read in the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Technology Committee ordinance is 1168-2015, 1185, and 1214-2015. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 666-2015, 882, 1138, and 1152-2015. And Development Committee ordinance is 1266 and 1273-2015.
Following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 135-X, 136-X, and 134-X-2015. Finance Committee ordinance is 1257, 1274, and 1297-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1008, 1162, 1170, 1225, and 1304-2015. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 313, and 1080, and 1245-2015. Technology Committee ordinance 1026-2015. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 949, 1045, 1107, 1151, 1244, 1248-2015. Development Committee ordinance is 1209, 1261, 1262, 1264, 1281, and 1283-2015.
We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins has signed up in support of 1262-2015. If you chair your name, address, any organizations you represent, sir, you have three minutes.
1612, Nathaniel George Wilkins, Chairman, solely vacant in bed and property in the North London area. I would just like to know what's going to be done with 12, 1676 Manchester Avenue and 2269 Edward Terrace. I'd just like to know what's going to be done with those properties. Thank you for your time.
Wilkins. Any questions for Mr. Wilkins at this point? Director Shoney, any additional information you could provide on 1262?
I'd be happy to, President Ginter. President Ginter, members of council, those properties will be redeveloped in partnership with Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, Director. Any additional questions or comments regarding the consent agenda this evening? Now, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table on the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, and Councilmember Tyson will be bringing forth legislation from that committee this evening.
Thank you. First ordinance is ordinance 1066-2015, to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Shelly &amp; Sands, Inc., in connection with the UIRF Bar Harbor Road sidewalks, UIRF Brittonell Avenue Phase 1, and UIRF Woodland Park Project, and to authorize expenditure up to $1,109,856.09 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. The scope of services for this project is improvements in the Woodland Park area along Brittonell Avenue and Bar Harbor Road to include new sidewalks, curb ramps, curb replacement, and other such work as may be necessary. This bid will be going to Shelly &amp; Sands, Inc. There were three bids that were separated by a margin of less than 1%, and the apparent low bidder, newcomer Concrete Services, was a non-local entity. And pursuant to relevant sections of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, and local preference provisions were applicable to this bid, and Shelly &amp; Sands, Inc., and G&amp;G cement contracts were given the opportunity to match the bid price of the lowest responsive, and responsible, non-local bidder in accordance with said provisions. And so with that, Shelly &amp; Sands was awarded this contract, and with that, I move for passage.
Second. Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1167-2015, is to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to appropriate funds within the Capital and Highways Improvement Fund, to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highway Geo Bonds Fund, to transfer funds between the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, the Fed State Highway Engineering Fund, and the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, and to appropriate the funds within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund and the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Shelly &amp; Sands for the arterial street rehabilitation, Hard Road Phase A, Sawmill Road through Smokey Road project, to expend up to $16,561,733.79 from the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, and the Street and Highway Improvement Fund for Contract and Construction Administration and Inspection Services in connection with the arterial street rehabilitation, Hard Road Phase A, Sawmill Road through Smokey Road project, and to declare an emergency. And this legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter in contract in the amount up to $15,076,712.91 for the arterial street rehabilitation of Hard Road, and to pay construction administration inspection costs up to $1,485,028.88. This will include roadway widening of Hard Road from two lanes to five lanes. It includes turn lanes, pavement, curbs, sidewalks, lighting, storm sewers, traffic signals, signs, and pavement markers. This is really an exciting piece of legislation because we'll get reimbursement from the Ohio Department of Transportation, we'll pay $10,017,923.58 of the cost, and then we'll be getting a reimbursement from the OPWC for $1,799,678.89, and then Dublin will pay $2,718,050.2. So the remaining balance will be from the City of Columbus, $2,026,081.30. So we're great to be able to leverage our $2 million to be able to receive $16 million, have a $16 million project. So this is great work, and I know that, Deputy Director Gallagher, do you want to make some additional comments regarding this?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Ginter, and other members of council. We appreciate your support for this project. As Councilmember Tyson said, we are able to leverage quite a bit of funding for this project. Many of you may be aware that the other two phases of Hard Road have been completed already by the City of Columbus, from Smokey Road down to State Route 315. So this will conclude our projects along Hard Road finally. We expect construction to begin here in the next couple of weeks and hope to have it completed by October of 2016. So thank you.
Move for passage.
Second. Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1223-2015, is to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Smart Route Smart Technologies, Inc., for technical services in connection with Facilities Routing Optimization System project, and to authorize expenditure for up to $1 million from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund to pay for this project and to declare an emergency. And Ms. Gallagher, you have comments on this legislation?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Ginter, and other members of council. Again, thank you for your support on this. This software we plan to use to optimize our daily refuse truck routes, and also for our snow routes during the winter months. Other cities have seen a reduction of 5% to 30% in miles driven, which of course then puts less wear and tear on the vehicles, and hopefully will reduce overtime for our employees. We also plan to use the software to prioritize right turns versus left turns, so that will help with safety, and then we can reroute quickly based on the type of storm, the direction the storm's coming in, and so forth. So I think we will see drastic reductions in time and cost for both our refuse and our street maintenance for the snow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. I'm sure Councilman Harden will hopefully be sharing that the success of this program with this council. So thank you very much, and I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll. Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And the last ordinance in Public Service and Transportation is ordinance 1251-2015, is to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to appropriate funds within the Street and Highway Improvement Fund, to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and within the Street and Highway Improvement Fund, to transfer cash and appropriation with the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to transfer funds between the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, to appropriate funds within the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Double Z Construction Company for the construction of the road improvements for Smokey Road and facilities. 1817th Avenue took spend up to $2,41,933.85 from the Local Transportation Improvement Fund, and from the Street and Highway Improvement Fund for the Contract and Construction Administration and Inspection Services in connection with the road improvements, Smokey Road, Smokey Road facilities, 1817th Avenue project, and to declare an emergency. So Deputy Director Gallagher.
Councilmember Tyson, President Ginter, and other members of council, this project for Smokey Row Road will add turn lanes at four intersections, and more importantly, it will add sidewalks to both sides of Smokey Row from Hard Road north to the city limits at Smokey View Boulevard. The second part of the contract is to enlarge and resurface a parking lot at 1800 East 17th Avenue. The purpose of putting them both together was for efficiencies in bidding. Again, we expect construction to start here in the next couple of weeks and to wrap up by the end of 2016. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gallagher, and with that, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll. Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Technology Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. The first and only piece of technology is 1028-2015, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Columbus City Attorney to enter an agreement with Matrix Point Software LLC for the purchase and implementation of a case management system, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $70,000 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Bond, HR, and City Attorney Fund, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $70,000 within the Bond, HR, and City Attorney Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $670,000 from the Bond Fund, HR, and City Attorney Fund Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Director Cavan, do you want to speak on this, or have someone from the city attorney's office speak on this? What's easiest for you?
I will say a few words and then turn over to City Attorney Pfeiffer, but thank you, Chair Klein, President Ginter, members of council. This particular ordinance, as indicated, is a case management system. So what it will do obviously is predominantly automate what's being done on paper today. The decision was made to go with Matrix because that's also being used at the county. So obviously, this would make for easier implementation, as well as be less or more cost-effective. And if City Attorney Pfeiffer, you want to add anything?
Chair Klein, President Ginter, and other members of council, thank you. If council approves this, and if this comes off as planned, this will bring greater efficiencies to the operation of our office. It will also make us better with the information the police give us when we prosecute cases, so we encourage the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cavan. Thank you, City Attorney Pfeiffer. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
One piece and rules and reference, sir. 1163-2015, to amend Columbus City Code Sections 1105.15 and 1105.19, to correct the language to designate the division of water in those instances where the division of power is currently referenced, as Section 1105 of the Columbus City Code pertains to the division of water. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Pro Tem Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinances to present. Beginning ordinance 1130-2015, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Columbus Sister Cities International, Inc., to administer the Columbus Sister Cities International program, and to authorize expenditure of $48,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Columbus Sister Cities currently receives support from the city to assist in staffing and administrative cost. If there are no other comments, Councilmember Paley.
I had the great opportunity to attend the Asian Festival Boat Races this weekend, and our Sister City representative was there, representing the City of Columbus and the sister cities, and I have to say, I had a really long conversation with him, and he was really excited about the city and what we're doing, and how open and global we are. So thank you, Councilmember Mills, for bringing that legislation forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. We had a great meeting with Sister Cities last week to talk about making sure that we're connecting and promoting business, government, and cultural, and educational exchanges with the addition of environmental changes, exchanges that we can benefit from our sister city relationships. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1132-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Gimpak LLC and Jim Patson Developments, Inc., for a tax abatement of 75 percent for a period of 10 years in consideration of proposed total investment of approximately 12.8 million dollars, which includes 6.5 million in real property improvements and 14 new full-time permanent positions. Just a little bit about Gimpak. They currently provide packaging materials to a variety of markets, which includes snacks, pasta, medical packaging, cookies, lawn and garden, bottle labels, pet foods, and coffee. The company provides this low density film and bag products to all of these industries. It also harvests a collection of a range of biodegradable products, including compostable food containers, cups, and dinnerware items, which are extremely important as we continue to do better in the area of environment. The company started with one manufacturing facility located in Middletown, New York, and has since expanded to 18 facilities throughout the United States and Canada, including their existing facility in the City of Columbus. Jim Patson Development, Inc. is proposing to invest the 12.8 million dollars in project cost while at the same time Gimpak will create the full-time positions. Director Shoney, do you have any comments to add to this legislation?
President Protem Mills, President Ginther, you did a very thorough job of summarizing the project, so I'll have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Shoney. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1336-2015 to authorize the appropriation of 125,000 dollars from the Jobs Grow Fund for the Green Business and Urban Agriculture Strategic Plan and to declare an emergency. I'm very excited about this legislation. It is certainly a step in the right direction as we review the internal city rules and regulations and all of our codes and policies that will impact urban agriculture. Farming in the urban core is certainly new, but it is a much-needed industry in our city. And similarly to the cities adapted of new policies to address some of our old policies and create new ones, such as with food trucks and petty cabs, we must continue to make sure our policies explicitly address urban agriculture as to preserve public health and safety while also supporting those looking to invest in our city in this particular industry. The project aligns with the second objective of the Green Memo, and that's Green Memo III, to add 10 acres of land for food production over the next five years. As we look at all of the aggressive benchmarks in the Green Memo, this is certainly a part of it and crosses so many other areas under the Green Memo. This is certainly an action item, which includes this internal review that this plan will establish and also streamlining and facilitating urban agriculture as it stands. It will be in partnership with the other initiatives, such as the Food Action Plan, Celebrate One, and Insight 2050. It's a component, a complementary component to the Green Business and Urban Agriculture Strategic Plan that will provide a market study and business plan focused on the potential developing and attracting and growing green businesses and activities within the core urban areas with a high volume of vacant parcels as we continue to address blight in our community. Some of those examples could but not be limited to urban farms, solar panel farms, and other sustainable energy creations, including rain gardens. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to... Any comments? I thought I saw a hand up. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chair Mills. I am excited about this Green Business and Urban Agriculture Strategic Plan. As you mentioned, I think that it certainly is complementary to the Food Action Plan that will be done in 2016. So just seeing that this will, the work that's happening, that will hopefully happen through this legislation, we'll be able to, when we're ready for the food plan, one part of it will already have been completed because of the work that Councilmember Mills is doing, and that certainly the Department of Public Health and the Department of Development are going to be working closely on that aspect of the plan. But certainly also having the codes and policies and things she just mentioned are going to be integral to moving this part of our economic development forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. This certainly will help us to continue our efforts in blighted neighborhoods as the Department of Development works very hard to make sure that we're looking at our addressing of vacant and abandoned properties in very creative but sustainable ways and not just demolition, but looking at how we address blight in a variety of ways and turning communities around who have been disproportionately impacted by blight in their communities. Director Shoney, do you have any comments to add to this legislation?
Thank you, President Protem, President Ginther, members of council, member Tyson. We're excited to embark on this project. This, as we go down the path of looking at how do we increase food security in the city and how do we address blight in these neighborhoods, we are, we know that there's a law of unintended consequences that we're going to face. And part of this study is trying to look around that corner and see what are the challenges that we're going to face administratively to make sure that as we bring a new industry into some of these neighborhoods, in the food industry, that we're doing it in a way that respects those that are there and already in the neighborhoods and integrates this into the neighborhoods in a way that is planful, thoughtful, legal, and that we're planning ahead for this process. So I want to thank you for your leadership in this and really working with my team. I also want to publicly recognize Vince Papcidero, who's been leading the charge on this, as well as coordinating with the Department of Public Health on Celebrate One and the food initiative. So he's really been trying to bring this all together into one cohesive piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Shoney. I do want to thank Vince. He's worked very hard on this and put a lot of time, as well as Hannah Reed and Hannah Jones. We appreciate their support as well. I wanted to mention that there's been some examples of success in terms of urban agriculture and revitalizing communities in other areas, and it's not only spurred development but also succeeded in leveraging outside sources of revenue beyond public support. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Protem Mills. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 1198-2015 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to modify a contract with Motivate International to expand the COGO bike share system, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of 99,790.24 from the Recreation and Parks Property Fund 294 and 49,895.12 from the Health Department Grant Fund 251 and to declare an emergency. I'd like to encourage my fellow members of council to support this ordinance. The City of Columbus, under the direction of Director McKnight, wants to expand our COGO system and make sure that we continue to provide our residents with healthy modes of transportation and make our city bike-friendly. Director, do you have any further comments?
Chair Page, President Ginther, members of council, these, the initial rollout of COGO was 30 stations. We added eight stations earlier this year. The funding for these come from the Health Department grant that they received, and the Ohio State University is contributing to a couple of stations up near Ohio State, so this will be a further expansion of that system. These new stations should start going in about the third week of June, so we look forward to continued expansion and growth of the system.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And we have ordinance 1312-2015 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with the Columbus Zoological Park Association to provide transportation, shirts, and novelties for children from the Recreation and Parks Playground Program to the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium as a part of the Melvin B. Dodge Summer Zoo Days and to declare an emergency. Director, do you have any comments?
I believe Tom Stoff, Director of the Zoo, adequately described the program. It's a great program. We're happy to be able to participate.
If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That is all we have in Recreation and Parks this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our final committee this evening is the Judiciary and Court Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. And Judiciary and Court Administration, this evening, we have ordinance number 1255-2015 to authorize the city attorney on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities to settle claims brought by the M. O. Company Incorporated and Gary H. Bass to authorize appropriation expenditure of 75,000 dollars and settlement of this claim and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. This point, if there's nothing else to come before us for our general session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We do have two non-agenda speakers that will take after we reconvene for zoning at 6:30, but we'll reconvene for zoning in five minutes. Regular meeting number 25 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on that committee. This evening in zoning, we have one, oh, actually, I should probably start out this way. Are there any folks that are here to testify or speak on behalf for or against any of the pieces this evening? If so, please stand. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening wish to speak either for or against any council variance, to raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. First this evening, we have 1211-2015 to amend ordinance number 1819-2013 passed July 22, 2013 for the property located at 732 North Fourth Street, 43201 by amending Sections 1, 3, and 4 to reflect the new parcel numbers, update the proposed parking reduction, reference the new site plan date, and replace the data table for Site A. The Italian Village Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. First of all, I would move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency. And finally, if there are any questions or comments regarding legislation, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next, we have 1236-2015 to rezone 868 West Lane Avenue, 43221, being 0.83 plus or minus acres located at the northeast corner of West Lane Avenue and Kenny Road from CPD, Commercial Plan Development District, to CPD, Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Bruce Taylor, care of Chris Wallett, DSA Architects, 1277 Worthington Woods Boulevard, Worthington, Ohio, 43085. The proposed use is mixed commercial development. Development Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation this evening? If not, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 1239-2015 to rezone 3535 Westerville Road, 43224, being 8.59 plus or minus acres located on the west side of Westerville Road, 1600 plus minus feet north of Innis Road from R. Royal District to LM2 Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Pinnacle Property Maintenance, LLC, care of Laura McGregor-Komek, 300 East Broad Street, Suite 450, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is a landscaping and property maintenance company. Development Commission recommended approval. Northeast Area Commission recommended approval. The city department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation this evening? If not, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 1062-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03, C4 permitted uses, 3309.14, height district 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05B12, vision clearance in 3356.11, C4 district setback lines. The Columbus City Codes for the property located at 780 Park Street, 43215, to permit a multi-unit residential and office development with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is The Wood Companies, care of John P. Kennedy and Michael T. Shannon, attorneys, 500 South Front Street, Suite 1200, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed unit use is multi-unit residential and office development. Victorian Village Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Is there a staff presentation on this legislation?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. I don't think my microphone... Microphone difficulty, sorry about that. Good evening. The requested council variance will allow the construction of mixed-use development with 10,000 square feet of general office space and building height ranging from 52 to 88 feet, a reduction of 50 required parking spaces, and reduced vision clearance and building setback. The site is located in the vicinity of several sites that received council variances to allow similar multi-story predominantly residential projects. This proposal will permit a multi-unit residential and office development that is consistent with the development standards and historic character of the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Next, we'll have a presentation or statement from the applicant. Mr. Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. President and Chairman Ginther, members of council. My name is Mike Shannon with Crab Brown &amp; James here on behalf of the applicant, The Wood Development Companies. Mr. Mark Wood is also here and available for questions. Shannon did a good job of summarizing the reasons that the Victorian Village unanimously approved this project and the reasons that the city's regulatory agencies are likewise recommending approval. I would like to point out for the record that this was actually filed in October of 2013 with the Victorian Village Commission, and we worked diligently with that commission until they approved the proposed development and attendant variances in November of 2014. In the interim, we've been working with the development staff, in particular zoning the historic preservation office and traffic to address the attendant variances. As Shannon indicated, this is a C4 property and could be developed with much more intense uses. We have requested a variance to allow residential development on this site. We have two separate garages that are actually constructed under the residential units, one that will be accessed off of wall and one that will be accessed off an alley that runs east and west to the south of the proposed development. We believe the parking variance is consistent with similar variances given of projects of a similar nature, and that is the required parking is 180, and we are proposing at this time 130 spaces. Shannon indicated the height variance from 35 feet to approximately 52 feet to 88 feet, and there are some vision clearance triangle reductions as well and a zero building setback. For the reasons... For the reasons stated, we respectfully request your approval of this council variance, and I'd save the rest of my time to address any concerns on rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any questions or comments for Mr. Shannon at this point? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. Mr. Shannon, just to be clear, could you... About the parking spaces that you just mentioned, you said how many?
The text currently provides for 130 spaces in the garage.
Okay. And so, okay, I'll wait to hear the rest of the testimony, and then we can come back. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you, Mr. Shannon. We do have three speakers. I'm sorry, we have two speakers who are opposed to this legislation this evening. Our first speaker is Ronald, is it Sigler? Mr. Sigler, welcome to council chambers. If you'd make your way forward to the podium, sir. Welcome to council chambers. If you'd share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and you have three minutes to speak to this, if you'd pull your microphone just a little bit closer towards it. There you go.
Okay. My name is Ron Sigler. I live at 1850 Jackson Road, and I want to thank council for allowing me to speak here. I'm kind of scared to death. The first thing I'm going to bring up is the... Can deal with the parking. In 2004, remodeling was done on partial 01023568 North High Street by The Woods Company, medical offices and Hubbard Bar &amp; Grill. Total parking was 86 required. Variance was given to go with 56 places. Zoning required parcel 1009149 and 0102546 were to be combined into one. In 2008, remodeling to enlarge restaurant area totaled needed was 149. Again, they stayed with the 56 parking places on the one partial that's supposed to be with the front lot. Parking allowances, you've already got that between what they were supposed to have versus what they don't have. They're short 101 parking places, which is a real problem in the area for parking. Building height, 30914, Victorian Village, 35 heights, you know, to go to 86 high. Parking and traffic, this is a major problem even through though they make Wall Street one way south and Lundie one way west. Trucks block Wall Street all the time delivering supplies to restaurants and bars, shops, and High Street. There have been times when my tenants on my property wait an hour and a half because they can't get out of the parking lot behind my property. The grant of this variance will impair the adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties. My property is at 2729 Lundie, four foot off the northeast line and one foot off the west or east line. 3133 is two foot off the northeast line. 20 foot across Lundie, there will be a wall 75 foot high, approximately 100 plus or minus long, with a driveway in and out in front of 31 and 33 Lundie. Dumpsters, 25 feet approximately less in front of my property at 2729 Lundie. Setback on Lundie is zero lot line. That puts coming out of their garage 17 feet to the sidewalk if they have a zero lot line. And I just want to thank you for listening to me because I'm here because I think the neighbors should have more parking in that area and less apartments with no parking. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. Any questions for Mr. Sigler at this point?
I think we'll probably hear from the other speaker who's opposed before we ask the applicant for a response or rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Sigler, for coming down and sharing your thoughts on this legislation this evening. Our final speaker on this piece of legislation in opposition is Chris Gagus. Is that... Did I pronounce that correctly, sir? Mr. Gagus, welcome to council chambers. If you'd share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and you have three minutes to speak against the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, President Ginther, and council for hearing me. My name is Chris Gagus, 760 North Wall Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Can you hear me now? I represent several organizations, namely, to begin with, my family. We own property on Park Street. We are partners in Short North Real Estate. It's a company. It's been around since the 80s, like Mark Wood and his father Sandy Wood, and that's about 40 units, 10 commercial. I manage several companies, Buddles Condos LLC, Buddles Gateway LLC, multiple units down there. I find myself in a difficult position because I know Ron.
So you can totally start all over, and if you'd share, you know, your information at the beginning there and go on with your comments and so forth, and speak directly into that microphone if you can.
I was hoping I would get the excuse of not having to speak because of technical difficulties. I serve on the Special Improvement District Board with Mark Wood. My family has a history in the Short North going back to the 80s, actually back to '74. To speak here tonight, I could have voted... I chose against. I could have easily selected for. I find myself in a difficult position because not only do I serve with Mark on the Special Improvement District Board, Mr. Shannon represented us back in the 90s in another case. Mr. Schiff was a former tenant. You know, these are good people. They're bringing good development to the Short North. That said, I wanted to address a couple of these variances. One that's not on tonight's agenda, but I wanted it on the record, hopefully, and Mark has agreed to start a conversation. It's about turning Wall Street one way. It is presently two-way. That will be difficult not only for this proposed development, but for our business in terms of dumpsters, but I wanted that on the record. In terms of the variances, while I'm all for an empty parking lot that's been empty for decades, and I recall from the mid-'70s, this parking lot being just that empty, and I'm all for development, what concerns me is along Wall Street, the height of this, the request, the variance, to go from 30-some feet up to 80-some feet along the High Street corridor, Short North. I think this is good, but just one block off from High Street to... While, if you look at the plans, they're lovely Victorian style along Park Street and Hubbard, along Wall Street, eight... Almost eight stories is what we're talking about, is setting a precedent that I'm uncomfortable with, and I'm hoping that tonight there'd be maybe a motion to adjourn, and so the conversation between Woods Company and Mark and Ron and other neighbors can be developed more fully to figure out a height that's more appropriate off of High Street, and that'd be suitable for all parties involved. Again, I want to reiterate, I'm for the development of an empty parking lot, and it needs... It's long overdue to be developed, but the height is troublesome to me, and if we... I'm not sure why seven stories is acceptable now and down the road, why even more than seven stories wouldn't be acceptable. As far as the setbacks, that's something I can't address, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gagus, and appreciate your indulgence with our technical difficulties there. Any questions for or comments for Mr. Gagus before we ask Mr. Shannon for rebuttal? Thank you, Mr. Gagus. And Mr. Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. The first issue I would like to address is the parking issue brought up by Mr. Sigler. There's been quite a bit of confusion caused by the fact that the Hubbard Grill back in 2004, when it was in its planning phases, received what is known as an administrative parking waiver for approximately 56 spaces. Those animals no longer exist, but they, at the time, required the signature of the chief zoning official and the traffic administrator to provide the waiver for the what would otherwise be required parking. This entire site was developed with a building and had no off-street parking. The conditions of that parking waiver were explicit, and Chris Bezooti reaffirmed his position on that in 2005, and most recently with a letter that we received Friday in meeting with him, that there were no required spaces per se, a number of spaces, just that some parking be provided, and we are doing that with our garages. So it's not a parking variance that was granted, and it was complicated even further that a 2008 site plan that was submitted for a small addition to some square footage referenced the parking waiver and also referenced the 51 spaces. Mr. Bezooti has asked us to modify that 2008 site plan to include the reference to the parking administrative waiver, but not the number of 51 or 56. So I could see why that would be confusing. With respect to the heights and the architectural issues, the Victorian Village Commission is a historic area commission that has the sole power to make these determinations. In over a 14-month period in their negotiations with my client, many of which were attended by neighboring property owners, they decided it was best to have the property shorter as it was on the Hubbard and Pearl's Park Street sides because of its direct proximity to the residential on those two streets, and the feeling was to step back the heights as you got closer to the commercial on High Street. I would respectfully submit to this council that the current zoning is (c)(4). It would allow much more intense uses than what we are providing. We are, in fact, seeking variances so that we can do residential. We don't have the ability that we would sometimes have to make changes to the building elevations and the things that have been approved by the Victorian Village Commission, because they issue a certificate of approval, and any alterations that we would make, again, after they deliberated for almost 14 months, would require going back to that body to get approval of those things. In this particular instance, as it is in all historic areas, we feel like we went through the process, and at the end of the day, you have to live with what the area commission recommends, particularly when it's a unanimous recommendation. That, given with the fact that the Wall Street, there is no proposal in this zoning to make it one way. There have been generic discussions with the Division of Traffic, and they are going to study that issue further to make determinations about the one way or not, but that would also require input from the property owners that butt that alley. So the speakers that you heard here this evening would have the opportunity to participate in those discussions, and in fact, I believe a certain percentage of those property owners would be required to vote in favor, sign paperwork in favor of changing the directions of Wall Street and the alley before the city could actually do it. And Mr. Blushman is much more conversant in that issue than me, and Shannon Pine is probably more conversant about the administrative parking waiver, but for the reasons we've already stated, the time we've put into this, this is a $30 million investment. It's the only project I'm aware of in the Short North where a garage of this magnitude has been included in the project without any TIF funding, without any public funding. It's a below-grade garage that obviously adds very substantially to the cost of development, and we're doing it to make sure that we are not underparked. Mr. Woods has been doing this for a long time, and his reputation speaks for itself, and having it underparked would not serve his interest, nor would it serve the community. And for these reasons, we respectfully request your approval of the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any questions or comments for the applicant? Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President. Just so I'm clear, Mr. Shannon, on the site plan that identifies a finite number of parking spaces, was it 56? 53?
56, I believe, is accurate.
So it's in your conversations with the chief zoning official, Mr. Bezooti, that the site plan is wrong. It should not identify a number.
The architect who submitted the site plan put the wrong language on there.
Because really, there is no number. It's just that the waiver applies, and the waiver requires that parking without a specified finite number be given.
Yes, and I have a copy of that correspondence from Mr. Bezooti.
And is Mr. Wood owns the front building where Hubbard is, and it also is the proposed developer for the project behind?
That's correct.
And so does the...
Which satisfies the... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Which satisfies the contingencies in the original administrative parking waiver.
So I guess that was my next question. Does the waiver, even though they don't exist anymore, still applies to the Hubbard Grill now? It used to be a former restaurant, but it still applies to Hubbard Grill, and that parking is being provided in this new project per the waiver requirements?
Some parking, that is correct, and that is stated in Chris's letter dated Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, council members? President Pro Tem Mills?
Thank you. I just have two questions, Attorney Chen. I just wanted to ask you to elaborate a little bit more. You touched on the elevation, but I'm not sure that I followed you on that. And then I had the question that was raised by the previous speaker about the original, the first speaker, in regards to the blocking on the street. You said that the discussions are just beginning. There's not a commitment.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I had that clear, or maybe I didn't follow well.
Okay. Wall Avenue, which is to the east... Wall Alley to the east side of the development is currently two ways. There was some discussion about making it one way, and currently, right now, Mr. Sigler has pointed out that being, even being two-way, sometimes it's blocked with delivery trucks, and we witnessed that when we were on-site and we met with him. But we assured him that the city is still studying whether or not to make that one-way or two-way, as well as Lundie Alley, which runs in front of his property, which is on the south side of our development, and those are not part of our zoning, our council variance application. With respect to the elevations, the heights are actually stepped back from the frontage on Park Street going in a westerly... I'm sorry, in an easterly direction to Wall Alley at the rear. So the lower heights, as you can see from the renderings that are there, the Victorian Village Commission was mindful of the residential development on Park Street and Hubbard, and felt that stepping them back higher on the Wall Street side... and felt that stepping them back higher on the Wall Street side was better because that's where you get to High Street. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And just to reinforce, total number of units, total number of parking spaces?
We have 105 units, and we have proposed 130 parking spaces, and that's what's in our text.
Councilmember Tyson?
Now, we talked earlier, I know in the text is 130, but I understand that you also have an agreement for 40 spaces for, for the restaurant.
That's correct.
So, so you're just using a minimal of 130 spaces because you've already committed 40 already?
Right.
Right.
You are correct, Councilwoman Tyson. You know, we went back to the drawing board when, a couple weeks ago, Mr. Sigler showed up and expressed his concerns to see if we could create any more parking in the garage, and found out late Friday from the engineer architects that they're confident that we could decrease that number from 130 to 140, and I would be prepared to make that concession here this evening. And it could actually go as high as 145, so I think the language would say a minimum of 140 parking spaces, and if that could be as an amendment to the variance, we think it might help address the issue.
And most of these apartments are one- or two-bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
So that typically people may not have two, have maybe one vehicle, or maybe no vehicles. So.
That's correct.
You have one or two. All right. Thank you.
That would require a motion to amend if we change that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Appreciate it. Any other questions, conversations regarding legislation? If not, first, I would remove to request take from the table. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Taken from the table. Second would ask to move, to amend, as submitted to the clerk, and ask the applicant to work with the clerk's office to make sure we have that language this evening before folks leave. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended. And finally, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Legislation is passed. Anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Klein Mills Page, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned.